Welcome, everybody, to the new year and welcome to the January 9th City Council meeting. Please stand and let's salute the flag, please.
Congratulations to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republicans for what you stand. One nation, one God, we give you this.
Justice for all.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri is absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Piscanti.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of December 19th.
So ordered, Samoan.
Calendar item number three, election of the 2023 City Council President.
Any city councilor can make a motion to proceed with the roll call.
Proceed with the vote.
For City Council President, Councilor Cogliandro.
Councilor Patrick Keefe.
Voting for Councilor Keefe. Councilor Keefe.
Councilor Patrick Keefe.
Voting for Councilor Keefe. Councilor McKenna.
Councilor Patrick Keefe.
Councilor McKenna voting for Councilor Keefe. Councilor Morabito.
Councilor Patrick Keefe.
Councilor Morabito voting for Councilor Keefe. Councilor Novoselsky.
Councilor Patrick Keefe.
Councilor Novoselsky voting for Councilor Keefe. Councilor Powers.
Councilor Patrick Keefe.
Councilor Powers voting for Councilor Keefe. Councilor Rizzo.
Councilor Pat Keefe.
Councilor Rizzo voting for Councilor Keefe. Councilor Sorino.
Councilor Patrick Keefe.
Councilor Sorino voting for Councilor Keefe. Councilor Silvestri is absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Councilor Patrick Keefe.
Voting for Councilor Keefe. And Council President Piscanti.
Councilor Patrick Keefe.
Voting for Councilor Keefe. Councilor Patrick Keefe is the 2023 City Council President. Councilor Keefe, please raise your right hand and repeat after me using your own name after I say aye. Aye.
Aye, Patrick Keefe.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As City Council President.
As City Council President.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
Of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, President.
Thank you.
Before we continue, I'd just like to have the mic for a few minutes and express my thank you. I want to first thank Council Sorino for serving as my Vice President throughout the year. Thank you for all your support throughout the year, so I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, without you, this council does not operate. You're probably one of or the most important person to all of us. And on behalf of myself and the rest of the City Council, I want to extend my sincere gratitude for all the work that you do for all of us and especially the help that you've given me this past year. Thank you. It's been much To my colleagues on the council, thank you for entrusting me with the presidency. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Revere as Council President, so thank you for that. And to the residents of Revere, thank you for the calls, thank you for the texts, thank you for the emails. I would say, I will say that this past year, we've had some spirited conversations in these chambers, to say the least, right? And your words of encouragement and support have not gone unnoticed and it means a lot to me, so thank you for all of that. And finally, most important, my wife Danielle, thank you, and my four children, thank you for their support. I appreciate it. I love you all. Thank you for everything you've done for me. On that note, we, I wish Council President Keefe and the Vice President much success in 2023. Thank you.[641.54][641.54][applause]
Council President Piscanti, on behalf of the Revere City Council and the City of Revere, we want to thank you for your dignified service this 2022 year as the Council President and offer you this momentous plaque for you to bring home along with your many other trophies, of course, your children's trophies.
Children.
Like I do. I have to try to stay up with them.
Try to compete.
And congratulate, thank you very much. You did a great job.
Thank you.
So we still have the Council Vice President vote to go through, but before we went to that, I wanted to take an opportunity to, first off, I wanted to thank our outgoing President, Councilor Piscanti, doing a terrific job in this last year navigating the turbulence and helping to maintain and upkeep civility in this hallowed chamber. Far too often, people on TV and social media, they see what's going on and think that's the normal way to act, disrespectful to each other, and to think that that's how you're going to get the job done. That doesn't work in real life. Life is about finding common ground and making sacrifices at times. Decisions are not always easy in black and white. We must be comfortable managing the gray and making tough choices, and we also need to know that it's okay to disagree. That doesn't mean we have to be foes. We represent our community with actions and our behaviors. We owe it to the 65,000-plus members or residents of the city of Revere to represent them with respect and proper decorum. This is how we operate in the City Council, and that will be my number-one duty to make sure that we continue to do so. I also want to thank my fellow council members for having the confidence in me to lead this honorable body for 2023. I'll take that responsibility seriously and assure my peers that we will always have space to debate and deliberate respectfully while doing the people's business. Our goals will always be aligned so long as Revere comes first. Lastly, I want to thank the residents of Revere who put me in this position to represent them. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my family. As an elected official, it's not just me who gets the calls, like Councilor Piscanti. He knows we get the goods and the bads, and sometimes our families share the brunt of that. Our families take that responsibility, whether they like it or not, and we appreciate them. So to my wife, my daughter Adriana, my wife Jennifer, and my son Patrick, thank you for sharing me with the city of Revere. It's an honor to serve as a councilor and an even greater honor to serve as the Council President. I'll never take that job for granted. I've built my life, my family, and most of my lived experiences around the city of Revere. My pride for what we have accomplished and the work we have ahead is a constant. Revere being one of, Revere being one of Massachusetts' top suburbs, to raise a family, own a business, live in peace, or to visit is our North Star. Revere is a special place to me, and it's a special place to all of us. Let's keep making Revere for special for all of our residents, our children, our senior population, our new residents, our old. That's our job. With that, look forward to getting back to business. Thank you very much.[958.32][958.32][applause]
Calendar item number four, election of the 2023 City Council Vice President.
Motion, proceed.
For the election of City Council Vice President, Councilor Cogliandro.
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor Cogliandro voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor Keefe, I'm sorry, excuse me. Councilor McKenna?
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor McKenna voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor Morabito?
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor Morabito voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor Novoselsky?
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor Novoselsky voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor Powers?
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor Powers voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor Rizzo?
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor Rizzo voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor Sorino?
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor Sorino voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor Silvestri?
Councilor Joanne McKenna, please.
Councilor Silvestri voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor Piscanti?
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor Piscanti voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor Zambudo?
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor Zambudo voting for Councilor McKenna. And City Council President Keefe?
Councilor Joanne McKenna.
Councilor Keefe, President Keefe voting for Councilor McKenna. Councilor McKenna is the 2023 City Council Vice President. Councilor McKenna, please raise your right hand and repeat after me using your own name after I say aye. Aye.
Joanne McKenna.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As City Council Vice President.
As City Council Vice President.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to.
Agreeably to.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.[1140.33][1140.33][applause] Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, students. My students. So they call me Mom McKenna on this council, and I just want to thank my fellow councilors humbly for the vote of confidence to be the Vice President of this council. I would also like to say thank you for your respect always, your love always, support, and friendship throughout my seven years of being a councilor. And I also want
Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to an update regarding the Revere High School construction project.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Congratulations, Mr. President. Looking forward to working together. Wanted to come up and brief the council on a couple of things. One is, you know, we heard loud and clear the fact that the council wanted to hear some more information about the high school project, so we're planning, I'm planning, to be available to the council on a rolling, rolling opportunities. As you have meetings, we'll have a standing agenda item that will be an update of the high school project, just so there's no miscommunication or any issues in terms of what is happening. And we know that this is a big, important project and one that we don't want to see kind of lose momentum. So a couple of things. One is, first and foremost, we asked you for a vote for MSVA submission. That didn't happen, but we are hoping that we can work on a timeline to get to March 1st to the MSVA. And so obviously, we know there are a lot of questions that need to be answered, a lot of work that needs to be done in between now and then, and I want to lay out a little bit of what we plan on providing over the next couple of weeks. Next week, you'll get an in-depth update from Chief Financial Officer Rich Fiskay talking about the details of the financing around the high school project and the numbers that we know that we have right now. A couple of updates that are important and things that have happened since the last time we were in front of you is that, well, so there are a few of them. One is, and most importantly, is that there was actually an increase in the MSVA contribution level. If you remember, back in December, we had said that the project would, would cost on our side, so what we're, what we're looking to pay for the project would be $338 million. That has been reduced down to $324 million. Not necessarily a huge amount of money, but $14 million here and there goes a long way in terms of making this project one that I know all of you can support and get behind. So I preface all of this by saying the numbers that we present are going to be a moving target. We know that. I think everybody knows that. And so there are things like this, like a contribution increase from the MSVA that is going to have an impact on what our final numbers look like. The other thing that I, and I'm remiss in saying that we have, obviously, Dr. Kelly is here to answer any questions. Brian Dakin from Left Field is also here to answer any questions, but, and Brian may go into a little bit more detail about this, but we've been doing geotechnical survey of the land to see what we're working with, and those tests have come back generally positive. So that is a hopeful sign that some of the contingency that we have around site, site work, you know, could be reprogrammed and that money, all of it may not be, may not be needed. The last piece is that there's value engineering happening. So the project team is looking at all of the things that we can do to reduce the cost on the project side. So, you know, we, again, we talked about Revere's share of this project being $338 million initially. That's now down to $324. The MSVA match would be $174 million. The value management team is going to be presenting a number of items for the school building committee to take a look at. And right now, the goal is to find savings that do not impact the learning that will happen and the programming, the educational programming that is to occur. And, you know, we're sure that there'll be some value engineering that's going to be feasible and that the school building committee can get behind and ultimately, I think, will drive the project costs down. But I just wanted to be here and be available if anyone has any questions. Certainly want to make sure that we're communicating or maybe over-communicating about the changes that are happening in the project, but wanted to make sure that you heard it from me directly and that, you know, we maintain the momentum that we have for the project and that we let you know that, you know, you can't kick the can down, down the road too far. So happy to, to, again, answer any questions or if Dr. Kelly or Brian want to add anything, I'm happy to have them come up and give a little bit more detail, but just wanted to give a quick project update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the few councilors, councilors, so we'll start in the far left. Councilor Zambudo?
Thank you. I hope that's a trend for the year with you, Mr. President.
Let's not, let's not get too ahead of ourselves.[1607.62][1607.62][laughter]
Thanks for the update, Mr. Mayor. So let me get this straight. The, the MSBA, whatever they are, the school building.
Authority, yep. MSVA.
Yeah, I don't like that when I'm saying. What's the, what's, what's the bottom line? Percentage-wise, what are they giving us as a?
So, so we, with the updated reimbursement numbers that we got from them, their grant would be $174 million, 991,951, and the Revere cost would be $324 million, 984,114. I think it's important when we talk about the project that we focus on the fact that we're talking about the Revere portion of what the taxpayers are going to be on the hook for.
I get that. I'm just curious to know what, what the percentage money is. In other words, when we built the first schools, we were in astronomical numbers of 80% or whatever. You know, where are, where are we at?
Yeah, and, and that, I mean, the 80% I know may have been a number for one of the earlier schools, but I know the Hill School was down to like 45% or 50%.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I started with the five schools. I spent the whole entire construction project on the first two schools, and I think we were getting somewhere around 80% back then, which was wonderful.
Right.
And I know those are the olden days, and we could really use those kind of numbers now. We're not going to get them.
Right.
And I think it's ambitious that we're, we're looking to move forward by March, but I'm awful interested in hearing from the CFO and seeing how we're going to afford this.
Oh, absolutely. And that's why I wanted to give you the update.
Yeah.
And in the meantime.
And I don't want to hold this up anymore. I just, you know, I'm, I'm deathly afraid that we can't afford this, but that's, we'll see.
Completely understand.
I can be convinced, you know, I'm not close-minded and I'm worried. I'll say that publicly.
Yep. And then, so the, the, the percentage of reimbursement through MSVA right now is around 41%, I believe. Brian can maybe talk a little bit more about that.
So that's somewhere.
But that depends on, you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into that with the school building.
I get it. So that's somewhere where, where the Hill School was. Is that what it was?
Right, yeah. And that's around where the Hill School was.
Yeah. And maybe Brian can answer this question. You mentioned that there was some good geotech news.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And does that mean that there's more land that possibly can be sold off? I shouldn't say sold. There's more land that may be usable than we originally were afraid of? And that's it for me. That's my last question, by the way, in case anybody's thinking I'm taking over this council meeting.
I'll address that quickly, Councilor, but the geotech reports are part of the testing we did.
we did in early December, and we've gotten the results back yet from a geotechnical point of view. Geotechnical is the soil's ability to withstand a load, not geo-environmental.
I get that.
It really, for us, means that some of the assumptions that were made on the foundation of the building and the design can be backed off, which translate to millions of dollars. Probably not tens of millions at this point. The number could become overall tens of millions if we get good news on geo-environmental soils.
So, we're talking less piles? Is that what you're saying? We're talking less?
Two-foot-thick foundations now instead of four, things like that. Yeah.
All good news. That's great. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councillor Visconti.
Thank you, Council President. If Brian's up there, either or, Brian, Brian. How's that? Both of you. Question, Mr. Mayor. The, the numbers you gave us, 324 and 174, 175, right around, we're still at the half-billion, though. Is that what we're?
Correct. Right. And that's why I think it's very important for us to be talking about the Revere portion that we're taking on, right? It's not, you know, I heard time and time again, a half a billion dollars. I get that. But on the hook for what Revere is going to be paying is going to be a moving target, right? And that's what we, what we want to do is, as much as we can, get that number down to a reasonable cost that folks, folks know. And what's important, I think, most important is that when we, when we talk about a project of this magnitude, people can get scared if they hear 500 million dollars or a half a billion. And what we're, you know, looking at is a, you know, 170-plus-million-dollar reimbursement from the state, which is nothing to, to, you know.
And, and I'm not discrediting that at all. My, my, my thought process here is when we first started all of this, okay, we were under the impression that the entire project was going to cost roughly about 340 million dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong, right? And, and, and so, in that half a million, a half a billion dollars, okay, there's still 190, 100 million dollars worth of a cushion that we still have to discuss. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So, there's, and so I believe the, the contingency that we're holding is in the, in the ballpark of 80 million. And a number of these factors are things that we can't quite predict, right? We're, we're planning and the number that we put before you is, what we're going to do is always come up with the, the worst-case scenario. All the things go, you know, not our way. This is what we're looking at. The last thing we want to do, anyone here, my administration or any consultants want to do is say, hey, that project, we need a little bit more money. So, what we're, what we're trying to factor in is be as conservative as possible. Say, what, what is the, the most amount that we can, we expect this project to cost? How can we back off of that? We're, we're in that process of backing off of that, finding value engineering. You're part of the school building committee. You'll hear, you know, many of the details around what that means. Does it create more space for potential redevelopment of the site? We don't, we don't know yet, but those are all options that are on the table. I think it's important to continue this dialogue so that nobody feels like, like we're, we're hiding anything or anyone's got their, their, their backs against a wall or a gun to their head. So.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Dakin, Dr. Kelly. More a statement than a question. We've been through this and, and, and we know this is, it's a must. Building a Revere, a new high school for, for the students of Revere has to happen. If we continue to wait, the price is only going to keep going up. And, and that's a fact. It's just a fact. With all business, with all development, we talk about impact on, on the cost, but the ma- the major impact I see here is on the kids. We've had many children in, going to hit the high school when it's built that have already had COVID interrupt their education. And, you know, building it on the old site, again, if, let's say that was, we threw that around for a little bit, that again was going to interrupt their education and, and cause some chaos with them in learning. I think it's on us. I think it's on us now. I think the time is now to get this done. I understand it's very expensive. I understand. But, but we're not talking about a car that's going to depreciate in value. We're talking about a high school that's going to be around for 50, 60, 70 years that children are going to learn. And right now, our high school is, is not even qualified as, as, as it would be, as far as the science labs and stuff like that. So, time is now. And, and that's, that's my point. And I hope the rest of you feel that on, on the council because we have to get this done. The longer we wait, I agree, it's a lot of money. And, and, and we do need to figure out some numbers, but we need to figure it out now. So, we know those numbers when we come down for, for the final answer of this. And, and again, it's on us to make this happen and it's on us to make it happen as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any of the councillors on the side? Councillor Rizzo?
Thank you. Originally, I wasn't going to speak on this because I believe this is actually in committee. I don't know if that dies now or we have to resume it or it stays in committee, but regardless, it's still, you know, up, up, up here for discussion. And just to follow up, and, you know, I, I, obviously, I respect my colleague, Councillor Silvestri. And, you know, I, I, you know, I was one of those people and still am one of those people that would have liked to see the school built on that site. I, if you, you know, when we talk about chaos in education, we just went through two years of chaos in education with kids not being able to go to school. So, you know, we've already, we've already been through that. Right now, as far as I'm concerned, as a city councillor and not a school committee member, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers on the financial side of things, not in the education side of things. And we have to make sure that, you know, the decisions that we make will have long-lasting impacts for people who actually pay taxes. And that is really what we have to be concerned about, our ability to afford this project. We can sit up here and talk about how much we need it and we want it. And there's a lot of things that we need and want, but we have to make sure we have a basis to pay for it. You know, what is the debt service on this? What is our funding source? What is the actual impact per taxpayer that they're going to have to come out and pay? We still haven't been definitively told if this is going to require a debt exclusion or a proposition two-and-a-half override. We have not had a definitive answer to that question because we really haven't had a definitive answer as to how much this is going to cost. I mean, at our last meeting, it went up 100 million dollars. So, you know, I think we need to be, I'm not opposed to moving along. I'm not, I'm not going to be an obstructionist. I'm not looking to stop the project. I know we need a high school. It's not my, it's clearly not a site that I wanted to see it built on, but the council disagreed with me on that. The vote went through and now we've got to deal with what's in front of us. But now the part we have to deal with as a city councillor is the financial part, and I want to make sure we're making good decisions. So, that's all I have to say, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Rizzo.
Do you mind if I just respond to the councillor?
Ms. Kelly?
So, you're absolutely right, Dan. And I think that the key thing that the mayor and I had a conversation about this week and the reason why we're here tonight and plan to be here at all of the council meetings between now and the beginning of March is so that we can share that information. And I know that we spoke to Rich Viskay today and his plan is to have a set of numbers in front of the council at your next meeting, which I believe is the 23rd. So, he'll, he'll have numbers then. And we just hope that this is a better plan for us to be coming all the time and be able to answer these questions on an ongoing basis. So, you'll have the numbers next time. After that, we can answer more questions if there are more questions and, and maybe have more of a collaboration around this as we go down this path. Because we know it is a, it's a tremendous responsibility for everybody. I will agree with Councillor Silvestri that the future of this city is in its children and really looking at what we can do to give a world-class education so that these kids are successful and come back. I look at how many people are up here right now, how many people I work with in the Revere Public Schools and other places, who are my former students. And that's what we want in a city is a, a place that's graduating kids that go on, become professionals, come back and be a mayor or a city councillor or a school teacher or, you know, whatever the case may be. That's how we build a city that thrives. So, I think that that's really important. And I will say to Councillor Zambudo's point, there will be, we will have to question, you know, maybe there, maybe there won't be fields. We don't know. We won't know everything about this land or what the final number is until we actually go through the design and the development phase. That's going to take us months and months and months from now. What we can do in the meantime is say, this is, this is the max point, as the mayor said a minute ago. This is the max point where we are. It can only come down from here and continue to do the work and refine it and figure out what the city can afford and whether we can, you know, maybe not do fields so that we have a chunk of land, as Councillor Visconti said, to, to develop and get some tax revenue coming in that way that helps to pay for the project. All of that are things that are on the table and that we have to look at and think about. We realize that. And so, that, that's why we're here, is really to help make, make this go forward in a way that everybody can be comfortable with it.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Councillor Cogliandro. You want?
I'll go far end. Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree with a lot of what's been said tonight. And I'm not going to repeat what everyone said. We need a new high school. Our concern is how we're going to pay for this. Can we just please get a little bit more notice before we have to vote on something next time? That's all I want. Thank you.
Councillor Novoseltsky or Councillor Morbeto? Be confident, be confident.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I think we all can agree that everyone on this council wants a new high school. We all feel education is top priority to better our city's success. But you can't deny coming in with a 100-million-dollar cushion, that shock factor, two days before our meeting, puts everyone in awe. And it's like, wait a minute, are they trying to pull a fast one? And, and I don't, let me rephrase that. I do not think you're trying to pull a fast one. But when you see such a cushion of 100-million-dollar difference, it's very eye-opening. So, I challenge you and your team, Dr. Kelly, Mr. Mayor. If you can bring down that 100-million cushion to cut 60 million out of that without it impacting the criteria of the school to be accredited high school and without hurting the educational aspect of it, you have my vote, if those numbers work.
Councillor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. As been said by everybody, we do need a new high school. But as Councillor Rizzo said, we have a financial issue. And I'm very, very concerned. I'm still concerned about the taxes, what it's going to mean to folks like these, senior citizens that own their homes. What's it going to cost per million dollars, $100,000 on their tax rate? I have an issue with the new fields going in. We have fields already. I think the rest of the properties could be used for other city issues, such as a new fire station for Freeman Street. And I don't want to see a building built, and nothing against our police department, but our police station was built above and beyond what it's being utilized for right now. It's underutilized in space. And I think we ought to cut back in the amount, the size of the building and not think about the future. Because you could think about the future and put another 100 million dollars or 200 million dollars into it. Think about the next 10 years and still cut back the size of the buildings. Only build what we really, really, really need with a, a little extension. But I have a, a serious concern with the monies, you know, this 325 million dollars. And I'll wait to see what people can do as far as, go back to the drawing board a little. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was around when they, we did the five schools back 20 years ago. And back then, we were talking about a cost of, I believe, 85 million dollars and reimbursement by, of point, that, 90% of that, I believe, was the number back then. So, I looked at it and I said, you know, eight-and-a-half million dollars, that's not bad. We're going to rehab all of our old schools. We certainly would spend that money in maintenance five, 10 years from now. And we would have, okay? I'm concerned with the dollar amount, too, as, as we all know. I think everyone on this board is, okay? But I also want to take into consideration, and I hope that the city council and the school department takes into consideration, the fact that we don't want to build a school and skimp on this and skimp on that and then find out 10 years from now, well, we should have built this lab and we should have built that lab and we didn't. And the, and the kids are getting shot changed in this city. So, I'm in favor of the high school, 100%. Again, I voted for the five schools prior to this. And I, I think they're in very good shape. As a matter of fact, the Runway Marsh Academy and right now, and the Paul Revere, two schools that were built by the two people that bid on the Pointe Pines Fire Station. And we really don't have any problem with the, with the construction down there that I've ever been aware of. So, I think, keep the cost down as much as possible, but build a school that is good for the kids in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Powers. Councillor Vice President McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was around in the 90s or the 80s when I was teaching in the library of Revere High School. And I went to plug something in and it didn't work. And we took the cover off and there was no electricity in the back of that cover. We do need a new high school. As a teacher for 32 years, I know what it's like not to have a science lab that's not adequate to the rest of the communities. I know what it's like to go through recertification and not get recertified because you don't have the adequate facilities that these kids need to learn. I do, I am concerned about the dollar factor, but like I said, I would hate to see something like the Paul Revere School or the Hill School, which is overcrowded and too small. We've built two, two smaller schools and we should have built bigger schools. I know we didn't, we don't have the land, but now everything is overpopulated. So, I am concerned about the, the dollar. I hope we can come to a conclusion with this. I wouldn't want to shot change anything and have something plugged in with no electricity in the back of it. I want a, a wonderful school for the Revere kids. And that's, if we can come to some sort of conclusion, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Serino and then Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but since everybody else spoke, I figured I would add my two cents. I, too, am very concerned about how we're going to pay for it, whether it's a, you know, 490-million-dollar project overall and we're only on the hook for 175, 190 million, whatever we're on the hook for. No, it's the other way around. I'm sorry. 325, sorry. Whatever it is that we are on the hook for, I want to be able to be confident from Mr. Viskay and the CFO hearing, you know, how we intend to pay for it and what it does mean for the taxpayers. But one thing Councillor Novoseltsky said, with all due respect, about, you know, building it over and, you know, making sure it's not underutilized, I, I tend to disagree in the sense of, I think part of the city's problem over the years has been that we don't have the foresight to think of 20 or 30 years from now. And I think that's where a lot of our problems stem from. And I think if we're going to take on this project, you know, obviously considering the costs and making sure we can pay for it, that we do build a, a high school that's going to last for another 40, 50 years comfortably. So, so I, you know, I, I do want to do a little more homework and I want to hear from the CFO, particularly about making sure we don't need a Prop 2.5 override or a debt exclusion and whatnot. we don't need a Prop Two and a Half override, or a debt exclusion, and whatnot. But I just wanted to add that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Silvestri.
Mr. President, thank you for the leeway, and letting me to speak a second time. And again, mine is to the point of, of building a high school that, that's going to sustain the next ten, twenty years. Everett High School, I think, is maybe two, three years old. They're already too small. It's already too small of a school. And, and for us to, to do that, to, to save a few dollars, and I, I know it, it is a lot of money. And I look into the crowd here, and I see some parents that I went to, to high school with their children. And, and we, we were kind of short-changed. You know, we had science labs that weren't adequate. We have children eating in the hallways right now. And we, we can, we can say all we want, that the cost, the cost, the cost. But can someone tell me in here, if we wait another five years, that the cost is going to go down? Is it going to go down in two years? Is it going to go down in three? So the answer to this question is, we fold it up right now, we don't have a high school, and we sit with this, because it's never going to get cheaper. And we all know that. So let's, let's put our heads together, and figure this out, and get a high school that's sustainable and fits the kids of this city. Because that's what we need. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Silvestri. And I'll, I'll wrap it up with, you know, just, just for everyone's at a vacation, everyone in the council agrees that we, we, we all want a new high school in the city of Revere, and the, the city, the school, the students and the children, and the city deserves it, and it's necessary. So there's no doubt about the intentions of the city council. I've been a big supporter from day one. Sometimes a little bit of a blind supporter, but I have my, the complimentary leadership of the entire council to bring different viewpoints and experience that they've seen in their, their year, in their past. So it's up for more debate. And I think the, the most consistent piece that we're hearing from all of the council tonight is, let's get a more rational number, that is certainly more palatable, more realistic. We don't want you coming back, so it's okay to have a small cushion. But we also want to hear with confidence from the CFO, that we can afford it, that it's not going to put too much of a burden on the residents and the taxpayers. There is no, there isn't going to be an override, and there won't be any sort of debt exclusions. That in itself will give, I think, the entire council a lot more confidence, and, and the ability to move forward. So if we can get that, I think that we'll probably be in really great shape. And, you know, again, I think everyone here said it. It's necessary. We all know that. It's, it's, it's not fun to pay for new things when they're that expensive, though, so. But thank you for the communication, and we look forward to seeing you in the future meetings, and hope to hear more good news.
Mr. President, this is still in Ways and Means, correct me if I'm wrong. So...
It's, it stays in Ways and Means, so the communications could be heard in Ways and Means, if that's...
Well, the further discussion in terms of Mr. Visca should go to Ways and Means first. And then, and, and if all the other councils wish to attend that meeting, they should, it should stay in Ways and Means.
I think that that's a great place for it.
Great, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. We'll, we'll be establishing the, the committee's next meeting. But if you have an update for the next meeting, certainly you can continue to this communication process. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. President?
Mr. President? Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you. Could we suspend the rules to maybe take up the late motion? We have a lot of people in the audience.
Certainly. Suspension, suspension of rules? All in favor?
Late motion presented by Councilors Rizzo and Visconti, that the mayor requests Lauren Buck, Chief of Health and Human Services, to appear before the city council to discuss the details of the warming shelter for homeless individuals being established at the senior center.
I know that there's, Mayor Horigo, you want to speak, wish to speak? Wonderful?
So definitely want to give everyone an update. I know you all received an email from me last week. But I think we'll kind of go back in time a little bit to January tenth, twenty twenty-two, when the city council approved a motion requesting me to establish a designated emergency warming center. And so, as I think everybody knows, around a decade ago, the, the senior center was, was designated as the emergency shelter for the city. We, in twenty fifteen, were granted money from the state government to improve and update some facilities and infrastructure at the, at, at the senior center. And ultimately, what we're, what we're doing is following through on the, the will of the council that was brought to us last year. Many of you know, we've used the, the senior center as a warming station, as a cooling station. We haven't done it very well. I'll be very, very honest, and say, when we've done it, it's been poorly planned in the past. We have scrambled to pull it together. And so what we, with this motion back in twenty twenty-two, and as we worked with our public health team, we said, how can we do a better job of providing this service, and not impacting the seniors, not impacting anybody in terms of the, the, the other services that we provide? So we, you know, and Lauren, Lauren Buck, worked together with the city, with myself, with many other folks in our emergency response team, to come up with a plan that would not have an impact on the, on, on the services that are provided at the senior center, but also provide that service that we know is needed, and provide it in a consistent manner. So the details of that, I, I think you all have, but I'll say them out loud, so that everyone hears them directly from my mouth. One thing is that the, the warming center, and this is how we've always operated it, is not a shelter. I think that's one thing that, that folks may, may think is the case. There are no beds. This is simply a space for people to stay warm, as it has been for the last decade or so prior. We've been, as I said, working closely with police, and fire, and ISD, and elder affairs, the public health department. Lauren has done tremendous work. And I, I, I can't say enough about the tremendous work that she's done, professionalizing our public health division, and being able to do things like this. So we've been working with everyone. The operations are, are happening in conjunction with an organization called Housing Families. The city did put an RFP out last year, last fall. And the response that we got was from Housing Families. And they've worked with, again, public health, to, to make sure that this will, will work. The, the warming center will be run from January fourteenth to March thirty-first. And as I said, it will provide a, a warm, safe place for people. And the, the, the planned time for now is seven PM to seven AM. It will be staffed, you know, roughly from five to eight AM, seven days a week, and can only hold a maximum of fifteen people. The other important piece is that we've been really mindful about this, because I understand that people may have a lot of anxiety. They may, they may feel like there may be some harm to them. We are making sure that there is no impact to the senior center operations that are happening on a daily, a daily basis. We've already committed and have, as part of the operation, a cleaning crew. There'll be onsite security as well. So the entire bill, well, the, the second floor will be cleaned and disinfected on a daily basis. And anyone that is utilizing the warming center would be cut off from access on the first floor. So happy to answer any questions that anyone has. I know that there's been a little bit of, maybe some misinformation, but a little bit of anxiety around this. And just wanted to be clear and transparent and open, and answer any questions that you may have. And Lauren is happy to, to answer any detailed questions that you may have. But again, I go back to the fact that this is something I know that's been discussed in this chamber, something that I think everyone was supportive of, or at least voted on prior, and we're making it happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to open it up to the councilors that had the motion. Counselor, Counselor Rizzo, Counselor Vis, Counselor Rizzo?
Very much, Mr. President. And thank you for that explanation. I, I was approached, and what prompted me to put this motion in, was actually several, several participants that attend the Revere Elderly Center on a regular basis. I think we're under the impression that this was going to be a homeless shelter, where people were going to be living. And that was the impression that I was under, which, you know, just made, just completely made no sense. I do agree wholeheartedly that this has always been a location that we would use, and actually create some outreach for people that may not have in the warm, or actually the hot summer months, that don't have access to air conditioning or cooling, so that they could come and have a place where they could be safe and cool. And conversely, in the winter months, if there, especially these days with the price of home heating oil, that people would have a place where they could warm. So this, we're basically talking about a cooling and a warming center as opposed to a homeless shelter, which I was under the impression was the case. Like, this is completely, completely different. And, you know, I'm sure it's still unnerving for the people that, that go there, because this has never been talked about openly before. And I don't know how the conversation actually really got started with the members, or the other participants over there at the senior center. But this has, since I can remember, going back many years, been open to people that needed those emergency services. And that's all they really were, were emergency services. And as it's laid out here, and to be quite honest, I, I know the email went out on Friday. I didn't see it until I got to the meeting today. I mean, it lays out that the dates that it's even available, which, you know, you know, was a real short window. It's January fourteenth to March thirty-first. I, I don't know what your experience has been over the last several years in terms of people utilizing it. I know when we, when we had it open many years ago, I, there, I mean, if, if, if you, if you'd get a few people, I think that might be a lot. Oftentimes, there was nobody there. So I think this could be, and I, and this is directed toward many of the people that are here, this could be, you know, something that's creating anxiety unnecessarily. I don't know that they have to worry as much as they probably should. I, again, I was under the impression there was, that this was going to be a permanent homeless shelter up in the Bachi Court, where, you know, people, this is, as you know, as we all know, it's a source of entertainment and enjoyment for our seniors. And the goal, I, I'm sure, is get as many people involved over there as we can. It creates a good, lively environment where people can socialize and take advantage of what they've paid for. I mean, they pay for that senior center. So, you know, this is a little, a little bit different than what I had originally anticipated. This is strictly taking some poor person that maybe doesn't have access to heat, or doesn't, we're not going out and seeking out a homeless population to, 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 you know, use, you know, use the facility as a makeshift homeless shelter. It's just, it's available for people that, that, that need that type of shelter. Am I correct in saying that pretty much?
It will be available. And, you know, you had mentioned the fact that in the past, the utilization of it, as I said, we haven't done a, a very good job of it. I'll be completely honest. We've, you know, we're rushing around depending on the weather, and trying to track, you know, okay, it's maybe cold this week, and what are we doing? How, how are we going to respond to it? And it, and what we heard from folks that do this is that having the consistency, having the professional operation, and being, being very clear about having, you know, a, a timeline of availability, allows it to be something that can be a little bit more successful in terms of being, a service being provided to the residents. The other thing that I'd say is that I know that change is difficult, and, and this is a change of use in a, in a sacred building in our city. And what we are looking to do is, is, you know, try this out. This isn't a, a definitive forever plan. If things don't work out, if people feel uncomfortable, it, it doesn't work, we're happy to scrap the program. But we look at it, I say, what are the services we provide? How can we improve upon them? This is a service that we do provide in, in hot and cold weather. We, like I said, we haven't done it very well, but we're trying to formalize that, really work on the team, with the team that we have in place, our public safety folks, our public health folks, and say, how can we really do this in a better way, and, and get the expertise that, that we know is out there?
So, so, Mr. President, I, I just, I, that just, you know, so, just a question through you to the mayor. Like, this doesn't sound like it's anything different than what's been done in the past. You just said it's, it's different, and I'm not sure where it differs from being a warming and a cooling center.
Well, it's different because we're doing, yeah, doing it more consistently. Obviously, I don't think that, like, we haven't had cleaning crews.
So as opposed to an emergency shelter, you're talking about...
Exactly. This is a consistent, every night, you know, it'll be available. And so that's different than the, oh my God, it's, it's going to be cold tonight. What are we doing? How do we scramble and get people together? This is going to be consistently open throughout those dates, every night, and open and available. And that is a little bit of a change from what we've done in the past, in terms of just trying to scramble together and say, okay, how do we, how do we open, you know, can we open the building? I remember my first year, we couldn't find the person that had the keys to the building. And so we said, okay, we got to open this up, because it's going to be cold, and we want to make sure that there's a spot. And this is the, I, I think, as everyone knows, it's a designated spot for our, for our emergency shelter. So I don't think everybody knows that, but now everyone does. And that's important.
Okay. And just, and just, thank you. And just one last thing, because there's a lot of seniors that have indicated to me that they're concerned from a, from a, a health and well-being perspective. You know, can you assure them that this is still going to be safe for them to attend their regular programming, their Bachi games, and everything else, that it will be monitored and cleaned and safe, the same way everything was during COVID?
Absolutely. And I'll let, I'll let Lauren talk a little bit more, maybe about that, but, I, I, because I want her to be able, her expertise in terms of public health, and knowing that it's a healthy, safe place to be. But that is, that is our intention, absolutely.
Hello. So obviously, we've thought a lot about using this space and making it as safe as possible. One of the contingencies that we put into the plan with Housing Families is that we will be utilizing the same misters that DPW utilized during the height of COVID, that disinfect in like, five minutes, every morning before the Housing Family staff leaves. We also, they'll also be doing clean, the Housing Family staff that's going to be working there every night will be cleaning the bathrooms, the hallways, hard surfaces with like, regular cleaning products. And then we also have contracted with the cleaning company that currently cleans all of the, the city buildings, to come in multiple times a week to do another round of professional cleaning.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say thank you for you and your staff for doing and trying to get this up and running. I think it's, it's, it's something that's good to see. Our concern, and my concern, was, I think, last week, I, I think you guys must have had a meeting with the seniors, okay? And as soon as they left you, they came to my office. You know, quite a few of them walked right over. And to be honest with you, I didn't know anything about it. And, and I guess that was the, you know, I heard some rumblings about it through some seniors earlier in the week, and I still had no idea about what was going on. So, and this prompted, after the people walked over to the office and had discussions, and, and then getting the calls, prompted really myself to put the motion in as well, and, and discuss it. Because not knowing about it was, I guess, our major concern. And I, I, like the mayor said, we did all vote on this. It's a little bit different than what we, I think, suggested or voted on. No? Is it the same? Okay. All right. I think it was, the late... I think it was the late George that put the motion in? Or was it Maravito? Okay, it's the counsel, Maravito. Okay. I don't recall, but, but that was our major concern, is that, you know, we have our senior population up in arms is what I'm hearing. They're not, you know, they're really concerned, even though you've gone through and said that they're not going to be impacted, there were concerns. So they wanted to be hea, heard, you know, obviously, getting calls, you know, to us and bringing us, bringing us the information. So that, that's what prompted this, to be honest with you.
Totally understand. Just in terms of the timeline, you know, we put out an RFP in August, actually, for a proposal that had a warming center that was only open during like winter storms or if it fell between a certain temperature, which you can imagine is a lot different than a seven day, a week operation. But we, we couldn't get anyone to bid on a proposal like that on a, on a housing agency that is really the experts in doing this, because you can imagine how hard that would be to staff. It's very hard to have people on call only during, you know, winter storms or cold weather. So that pushed our timeline back where we had to revise the proposal. And then we finally got a bid late November, December, and since that time, we've been working with Housing Families. We did talk to the Board of Health on the 22nd, and what you're referring to, I believe, is that we would talk to the Elder Council and that was on December 28th.
Oh, okay. Well, that's what I'm saying, it's the short notice and, and just to my point, when, when you said you put out an RFP, I believe myself was under the impression that it was a warming station on the cold nights, similar to what you, you were doing in the past. So when we heard that it was, I believe, seven nights, and I'm just getting that information, honestly, I know the mayor sent out a, a letter to us or an email to us on Friday evening, but to be honest with you, I missed that and got it this morning. So, and that's not the mistake of the mayor, it's, I didn't get the chance to read it. So, but it does lay out a lot of the stuff. There's still concern and I think putting their minds at ease, as long as their minds are put at ease, then I think we're, we're, we're put at ease, you know? And that's the major concern is making our citizens as, as, you know, voice, like, understanding their concerns, and I'm sure you're doing that. So, thank you for that.
Yeah. Well, and I'll just say, you know, this is a process, like the mayor was saying, that we've never done as formalized as this. And we also recognize that anytime that you're trying something like this, there might be issues that pop up that we, yeah, pushback or issues that we haven't thought of, although we've tried to brainstorm as many of those scenarios as possible. We are really relying heavily on a model that works really well in Malden, that has been operating for many, many, many years. And so we've met with Malden many times and Housing Families actually works with them on a regular basis at that, at their warming center. So we're trying to learn some of the lessons that they have learned, but there's always issues that pop up and we will just do our best to address them and reassess if it becomes a scenario that's untenable.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Zamburro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a noble goal. I feel a little better hearing that it's Housing Families doing the, because I've had some experience with them over the years, I've attended some of their board meetings and because of my affiliation with CAPPAC and so forth. So that makes, puts me a little more at ease. I think, I'd like to see better communication. I think, you know, I wasn't on the council, so I'm not criticizing anybody when this was voted for, and I would have obviously supported it because it's the right thing to do. There's, there's no question about that. I'm not sure, I might have wanted it in a perfect world to be at a different place than the senior center. That doesn't look like that's going to happen and I'm sure this is going to be monitored really carefully and there's not going to be any risk for the seniors and we're going to guarantee them that. But they're not, you know, it's going to take a lot to convince them of that. And maybe it's, maybe it's just going to be the first week or two that this happens and they see there's no disruption and no risk in any way. That's the only way we can, we can make them feel better about this, because I, I was attacked getting off the elevator here tonight, so, and not attacked, these are my dear friends and, and they're concerned and, and we're all concerned. But just on a little side note, I know we're now doing COVID, COVID testing next door and that's where I'm getting at, the communications, I think. I, I heard that through the grapevine. I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything about that, I don't know if anybody else did. Yeah, well, maybe it was before I got on here, I, I'm not sure. Okay, well, if we can give a little more communication, because I had someone ask me recently where to get tested for COVID, and I said Suffolk Downs and then I happened to ride by and it wasn't there anymore. So, so anyhow, it is at the American Legion now, is that correct? Yeah. Okay. So, so that's my public service announcement here. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Lauren, for coming up and, and I, I have to say, I commend you, Mr. Mayor, and, and the staff and for making this happen. And, and I'll tell you why. I, I had the privilege of working on the emergency response team during COVID and I was one that worked with a lot of our homeless population. They're not all bad people. They want a place to stay warm. They want a place to stay alive and that's what we're looking at. We're not looking to keep any. Ma'am? Thank you. December 22nd, Buffalo, New York, one night, 43 people dead in the snow. Texas, two days later, 45 people dead in the snow. Wait, I, I promise you, I promise, I'm giving you my word, ma'am. Just like I went into the encampments in the city and made sure, you know what, when you give them people this much and they, you show them your little respect, do you know what they do? They clean, they help, they want to be, they want a place to be warm and that's it. They don't want to bother anyone, they don't want to ruin anything. Ma'am, we're not closing the senior center for this to happen. Once the senior center closes, they come in, before it even opens, they're gone.
Miss?
Why? Why are we forgetting about you?
Counselor, Counselor.
No, 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 Mr. President, I, I can't, because you want to know what? We're talking about people's lives here. And you know what? If I have to lose some votes to save some lives, then I will do so. Because you want to know what? People are going to die in the street and if y'all are going to look at them in the face and say you're okay with that, then be so. But you know what? I'm not. I'm not okay with burying people because it's 15 degrees out.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Pat.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. I got it. Okay. All right. I got it. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Everybody, just cool down, please. Okay. We're going to let the council speak and listen, I know there's people in the audience that you certainly have an opportunity to speak if you'd like to. And just so, I mean, I think we all know that we care about you, we care about you, we care about everybody. We represent all, we represent all the residents of Revere. We care deeply about you, but let's please, if you can help, if you, what?
How many of you succumb to your parents?
Okay. Mr. Shatino? Mr. Shatino? Mr. Shatino? Can you?
I'm surprised at you people. I am very surprised that you want us to vote for you.
Mr. Shatino? Ms. Shatino?
The mayor, I am surprised.
All right, we're not going to debate from the chairs. Counselor Moore, if, if you want to come up and speak, we'd be happy to let you come up and speak. Please show us the same respect I'm showing you. If you don't, if someone else, that's fine, I'm, I'm giving you the same respect, please show me the same respect. And I respect the heck out of you guys, I really so much. I love you guys, so please. All right? Counselor, I'm going this way. Counselor Cal Leandro? No, Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am the chairperson for the elderly affairs. I understand, I think, I understand how you feel, I really do. You think that, okay, I can't talk when everybody's talking.
Let's just.
Can we?
We're just not going to debate, we're not going to debate the floor tonight, we're going to talk amongst each other.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, so all I want to say is, I understand how you guys feel. I understand that you feel that, you know, people are coming in, homeless people, and they carry disease and they carry, you know, sick illness and sickness. Counselor Silvestri? Counselor Silvestri? Mr. Count, Mr. President?
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that you feel like these people that are coming into the senior center carry diseases and, and I understand, I'm a senior too, believe it or not, I'm a senior. I might not look like a senior, but I am a senior. And I have very bad asthma and I understand how you feel. I really do understand how you feel. But I talked to Adrian Maguire today and she went step by step by step by step of what they're going to do. And I, I'll hold them accountable if they don't do it. I think the rules need to be defined and I think that there should be, and they're saying they're going to disinfect upstairs, they're going to clean everything, they're going to make sure that there's nothing left in upstairs. I understand how you feel, but I'm just saying, I think they're going to, they have a company that's going to come in and clean this place every single day. And, and they're going to close off the, the bottom floor so no one can get in there. So, I just, I want to say, just give it a chance, because we are dealing with human beings. So, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moravito.
Oh, I think after all of that, I kind of lost my train of thought, but I just want to let you know, all of you guys are here tonight, right? And you shouldn't feel, I, I don't think you should feel like you're vilified, you know, you shouldn't feel like you're, no one wants to point, you, single you out as villains because you guys all have hearts, you care about someone who's homeless. But what your concern is, is your concern is being sick. Some of you guys are wearing masks, you don't want to get sick. But can I tell you, when you go to your doctor's appointments at the hospital, you probably have a higher risk of getting sick going to your doctor's appointments? Because let me tell you, this, this has al, just hear me out, this has always been existing a warming center in our city. The only thing that changed is the professional aspect of it, the professional operation aspect of it. So this can be, they will, there's a maximum of 15 people, there's more people in here than there will be at the warming facility. But with that said, we, we need a temporary emergency shelter just to keep people warm during the emergency.
I'm going to say it one more time. Please, please, this is, we're talking about respect here, please. Counselor Moravito, and this goes for other councils, every counselor, talk, talk in general, we're not talking to one specific person in the audience, we're not doing that. If, if, we will give ample time for any resident that wants to come up and speak, please, please, we're going to give you an opportunity to speak. Don't shout from the chamber, please. I, I don't want to be disrespectful to you, but can you just let him speak at the end? You can talk, you'll get your time, please.
So, we have a professional operation. There'll be staff in the building two hours prior to anyone coming in. When they leave, there'll be staff there an hour later to make sure everything's cleaned up, everyone's checked out and everything sanitized. I'm sure there'll be a sanitation log there that shows when things were cleaned and someone has to sign off on it. In addition, we've got to keep in mind, it's for someone in need of temporary emergency shelter to keep warm and stay safe, or even someone who's transitioning into a permanent living space and needs to keep warm for a night. So we've got to keep this in mind. As far as the sanitation and disinfectant, I'm very confident and I think each and every one of us will follow up on it, especially after what happened tonight. Think about it, just from each and every one of you being here, your voice was heard. If you don't think we're going to close, if you don't think we're going to double check and follow up on this after each and every one of you came here, you're crazy, because we are. We are. We will follow up. And if you think the mayor and his team, it looks bad on them. If they don't follow up, it looks bad on them. If it, we don't follow up, if something happens, it looks bad on us. So you can mark us for, by the words we speak, so.
Thank you, Mr. President. My, when I heard of this, okay, first of all, I wasn't fully aware that this had been going on months, years ago, okay? My, my primary concerns with this were, number one, cleanliness, is this going to be a clean area? Is it going to be set off from the downstairs where, when I get down there, I find most of the seniors are downstairs in that first floor. That's where they're having their lunch, this, that and the other thing. My other concern was, are we going to have adequate security down there? Are we going to have security that will be there to prevent not only roughhousing, but somebody coming in there with drugs or something like that? These are the primary, that's what I'm more concerned with right now. Does somebody come in there distributing drugs, selling drugs, whatever they might be doing? And that's where I think you really need the professionalism with regard to security down there. They can spot these things, they're aware of it and, and I, and I think the other thing you need down there, again, as I said, is cleanliness, making sure the building is clean, making sure that somebody's not coming in there that is COVID infected, you know? I mean, for, for months, in a couple of years, we challenged people going into buildings and schools and shopping centers and supermarkets, they had to wear a mask, they had to do this. I think these are the things that Lauren here should be looking at too. She's in charge of the health department. So those are my feelings on this entire thing.
I'd just like to address this, I can address both things. So first, security. Security will be on site. It's a, Housing Families is the organization that's running the warming center and they have contracted with a company called Jet Security. They currently operate at Pine Street Inn. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but it's a shelter that runs out of Boston. We met with them last week and I was really impressed with their level of knowledge of specifically dealing with centers like this and populations and problems that you brought up. You know, we've also, we've also incorporated the police into our conversations about this. We've incorporated security cameras, different lights, different locks in the building to try to prevent some of the security concerns that are potentially out there. And hopefully, issues that come up, we can address right away and, and, you know, whatever, you know, whatever issues come up, hopefully we can address right away. But, so that's the security component of it. In terms of the, the health component, I did mention how we had thought through the cleaning process. I'll say, I'll say this much, in terms of concerns about specifically COVID as an illness, you know, there's never zero risk, there's never zero risk in this room that we're in right now. Any one of us could have COVID, you know, and it's just how we all live, that's what an invisible respiratory virus, that's, that's very prevalent in our community, that's the risk that we all live with. You can wear a mask to help prevent it. What I will say specifically about COVID is that a lot of the data shows that the, the risk is not from touching surfaces, that someone that was potentially, you know, that had COVID, you know, that someone who had COVID, that you touch the surface and then you pick up COVID, it's really, most of the risk is about like, you know, talking and breathing in and it's, it's an airborne, you know, respiratory disease. And so when we talk about how no one, no guest of the warming center will be in the center when the seniors, the, the regular hours of the senior center operating, you know, there's a huge component of preventing COVID right, right there. There's, there's no overlap between people who are using the center as an emergency warming center and, and people who come in to use the senior center for regular hours. That being said, there's never zero risk about anything and... There's, there's no overlap between people who are using the center as an emergency warming center and people who come in to use the senior center for regular hours. That being said, there's never zero risk about anything and even in this room right now, there's not zero risk for contracting COVID.
Thank you. I do wanna give, Counselor Rizzo, I think you wanted to speak. And I know that, but I also, if you'd like to come up and speak, please, please approach the mic, feel free to line up if you wanna raise your hand, we'd be happy to give you an opportunity to. Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, obviously, obviously, we all recognize the concerns of our friends out here, our seniors. And as I've been listening and thinking, all of us on the city council, you know, I know, I know they know, it doesn't appear on the surface, but they know that all of us as elected officials, we support our seniors and have always supported them. And I totally understand where they're coming from here. This is a very important piece of their lives. So I'm wondering, I mean, there's not gonna be beds, that was what I was first thinking about, there was gonna be beds. Well, where there's no beds, why do we have to send them to the senior center? I mean, I think Lauren just mentioned this chamber, why can't we use this chamber as a warming center? Why can't we use the community? Why, why can't we use the police station and their community room as a warming or a cooling center? I mean, there are other, I mean, we could talk to our friends over at the American Legion. I know that we, I think the city, I think the city owns that building, I'm pretty sure. You know, we could, you know, I mean, there are options and, you know, and again, like this is so new, the one thing that I wish, and this is not a, I'm not saying this to take a shot at anybody or anything like that, we're all trying to solve a problem. But I think as counselors, it would be nice if we had a little advance notice before the seniors are coming to us telling us about it and we don't know anything. So, you know, we really, we really, we really should have some advance notice, hey, we're gonna be talking to the seniors, letting them know, we're changing the plan, even though this has always been a warming center, cooling center, we're gonna do this. But I don't see any reason why Housing Families, Inc. couldn't, instead of go to the second floor of the senior center, why they couldn't come to the council chambers, or why they couldn't go to the community room at the police station where it'd be very safe for them. So I think we should explore options, to be honest with you. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Rizzo. I do wanna give some time, do you wanna make a quick one, Counselor Silvestri, just address me, or Counselor Sorino?
Mr. President, I think-
We're on section, item number two tonight, just so everyone is aware. Counselor Sorino.
To Counselor Rizzo's point, and I could be wrong and maybe Lauren could correct, but I think the reason the location had to be the senior center is because that is the designated weather shelter for the city. And maybe that's a different conversation of changing the, you know, the specific weather shelter, but I think that's why it had to be the senior center.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to say, I apologize for losing my cool there, but this is a situation and something that's very dear to my heart. And I explained to you, when I came out of the service in 2011, I had nowhere to live. In the winter, if I had a warming station, I wouldn't went anywhere. That's first off. Two, I believe also there's a kitchen so they can have snacks and stuff like that at the senior center. But now, I know it is, but we have staff that can go downstairs and bring the snacks up to the people.
They will not be feeding you, no. Thank you.
Okay.
There'll be snacks potentially given on the exit.
And just this last thing, and I know, believe it or not, I'll see if we can pull the records. As I said, I worked for the emergency COVID response team. I fought with the Suffolk Downs at the time because there was only first responders that could be tested down there to get the people in the encampments tested. When I walked over the edge to the doctor, the doctor said, "Don't be surprised if every one of these people have COVID." You wanna know how many had COVID? Zero, zero out of 24. And they were supposed to be the mass spreaders across the city, but because they were outside, because they weren't in controlled environments, we had more of a risk getting COVID, being locked in our homes than they did in tents. Again, I apologize, I respect all of you, but this is something that's dear to my heart. And again, I don't wanna see anyone die on the street because of cold. Thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, so I wanna, I wanna open up to some of the residents, but I also did wanna acknowledge that, you know, we, I started getting calls on Wednesday, I think Wednesday or maybe Thursday, before I had really known. Obviously, we do know that, we do, the council agreed, we know that this is deemed the warming center, we know that it's deemed for emergency use, and we understand that. I appreciate some of the residents that use, service the senior center for reaching out to me, apprising me of the situation, and then Friday, we did receive communication. So if I can just wrap around the greatest opportunity that we have to acknowledge, communication is key. And I do, I do, I'm gonna request that there is a forum with the senior council, again, that involves all of the senior members that are, you know, especially the ones that are here tonight because seem to be, seem to be the most interested parties, but also well-spoken, you know, and very well-respected, extremely well-respected. So I would ask that the mayor and his staff, and especially the staff from the emergency response team, wrap around and have another consultation with this group in a form, a proper forum, to address the concerns. And like Mayor Rego mentioned, if he has to scrap the plan, I know he will. He doesn't, no one is here to upset you. We care deeply about the seniors, we care deeply about the senior center. I mean, we frequent there more than half the places in the city, I think you know that. Counselor Silvestri's obviously very passionate about this subject, so I appreciate him and I give him a little bit of that leeway. So that's all I wanted to say. Ma'am, please step up, name and address for the microphone, thank you.
To the senior center. And when I belong there, we were told that we had to show proof of that we got vaccinated. And so if we have to show proof, why is it that people can come there and not show proof? And also, we're a very vulnerable group of seniors and, you know, for them to have people go there that aren't vaccinated, and there's a lot of people, you know, the seniors, that have a lot of underlying conditions, and we care about the homeless too, but we are hoping that they can have some other place where they're not vulnerable seniors. And as one of the members from the senior center said, "Would you have your mother and father go someplace where there's, you know, possible, you know, diseases?" Because I don't, I don't really know these people, I don't know if they're living in the street, I don't know what kinda things they may be carrying because they've been living on, I don't even know if they're living on the street, but that's what, because we don't know. And so it's very concerning.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is, as we receive these questions, I'm taking some down, I'd ask that Ms. Buck take note of these questions so that she can come and follow up with some answers at the end. So it's not a back and forth the entire time, I wanna give you ample time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I give you the opportunity to talk to you. Most of the, my complaints-
Mr. Schettino, I know who you are, but for the record, name and address.
My name is Frank Scettino.
Scettino.
S-C-H-E-T-T-I-N-O. Forty-eight Reservoir Ave. Most of my concerns have been talked about right now. Mark, on all purposes, we're not against homeless, believe me, it's just the opposite. But we don't think the venue is the elderly center. One of the things I can't do is hear too well, so a lot of this discussion I wasn't even aware of. But from what I understand from the mayor, it's seven to seven? What happens after that?
Answer them all after, and Ms. Buck can explain.
Yeah, no, that was one of my questions. What do we do after that?
Great question.
We don't wanna put them out in the cold again, which is five degrees temperature. You don't wanna put them out there. Yeah, they gotta find a place to go. My gut feeling, Mark, they're gonna be putting tents outside. Yeah, okay, I hope you're right, but that's my content. And if that is the case, we're gonna have a difficulty with that. You're not gonna put them out there if there's five inches of snow or whatever, where they gonna go? I mean, you can't expect these people to be hiding in McDonald's and all that places. I mean, they must be doing that now because we don't see them, so. Let's see, what else I had here? Again, I don't know anything about the cleaning people, but it was our feeling that it'd never be completely cleaned. I don't care, you got the elevators, you've got restrooms, you got stairways, you got the bocce area itself to clean? It could be possible, I have no idea who they are, and it can be done. But unfortunately, I think if we don't do something, we're gonna lose a lot of people at the elderly center. And that's, that's all we have really left, is the elderly center. So we hope we reconsider the arrangements. Again, we're not there against the homeless, but we just wish it was another venue. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Ms. Forgioni?
Silvestri, I just have one question. How many unoccupied buildings, commercial and residential, are there in Revia? I think there's maybe over 50 residential and maybe 10 commercial. So if you could just check into that? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forgioni.
You gotta push this? Oh, okay. I'm a member and, Mark, you have-
Name and address to the record, I'm sorry. We know who you are.
Okay. I'm Lucrecia. Oh, all right, I'm too short. You brought up the point of them going down and get maybe a snack for them or something. I don't deny anybody for me, and I'd be the first one to start cooking, okay? But when we play bocce, we were told that per the Board of Health, we can no longer have coffee or bring in, you know, a lot of us are old Italians, they bake, they like to bring in cookies for the other members. We were told we're not allowed to do that anymore. We always cleaned up, we went and get the coffee, we did all that. I'd like to know why they would have the privilege. And mark my words, I feel bad for people who don't have anywhere to live. But you cannot say yes to one group of people and say no to another group. I wish somebody could answer that for me.
We will, we're gonna, we're gonna have, I'm putting, that's fluid question.
And I just gonna test if they're vaccinated. I know we're all vulnerable, even with the vaccinations. But you have to realize, and I'm one of the younger seniors, a lot of them could be my sister, some maybe could be my mother, okay? But I love them, I love them like they were my own.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Frankie Sarrow, Tenth House and Avenue, Revia, Mass. My question is, we're all here for one thing, our health. Everybody has an issue, and I have plenty. All right? Immune systems and everything. We're not guaranteed the people they're gonna have come into that place every night. They're gonna be different people, probably. They're gonna take numbers to go in there. It's good they're gonna clean it up, very good, very good for us. My concern is too, why don't they have it at the center school on Winter Avenue, uh, the McKinley School? It's wide open. Anybody have any answers on that?
Well, Mr. Sarrow, we'll answer them all at the end, just to make it, we're gonna answer all the questions, we're gonna hope to have answers from all at the end.
No problem, no problem.
But those are good questions.
I'm concerned about all my friends, all right? You took the Hill School and took a nice park away from us for the seniors. We used to go there every summer night, play softball, watch softball games, bocce games. We put a high, we put a school there. Now, we play bocces in our senior age. And you're gonna take that away from us?
No one's taking bocce away, Mr.-
Counselor Silvestri.
By the way, you think I'm gonna go up there again? I'm not going there again.
We'll answer them all.
I know, these are the greatest people I ever know, listen. Please, Mark. Go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
Mrs. Sarrow, please just address me, we're gonna answer all the que, again, we're gonna answer all the questions at the end, if you're finished with your questions.
I mean, I'm hearing everything from my friends over here.
I agree with you.
We got the word at the last minute. Nobody told us a thing about this thing. And it was sprung right on us while we were playing bocce. I don't think that was fair. Somebody should have been talking to us, speaking to us about this. They have a senior group of people in charge of the, of the affairs? I never heard anything about that. I'm just hearing it now. Because I've been out of the loop for a while with my health. I don't wanna see anybody else get hurt like I did, you understand? We're all in here at 100%.
I don't disagree with you.
Sorry, I'm off here, boy.
No, I don't, we don't, I don't think anyone disagrees with you, Mr. Sarrow.
The best friends of my life over here. Know Adrian when she was a baby, Jimmy, Brian, the doctor. You don't remember me? Why, I used to pick up the papers in your room? Okay, but I hope we can do something.
We're gonna, we're gonna answer some of these and we're gonna, and we're gonna, I'm gonna ask that, if, is anyone else looking?
Yeah, anybody else wanna step up here?
So we're gonna try and answer some of these questions, okay. Mr. Sarrow, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jonian Wood. I live in Prospect Ave. and I'm a senior at the senior center. What we're concerned with is they are sleeping there at night, the homeless people, and we, we sympathize with the homeless people, we don't wanna see them homeless, but put them somewhere other than the senior center. We play bocce, they're never going to get that room cleaned in two hours in the morning.
Thank you.
And we don't know if they're vaccinated or boosted, which they may not be.
Well, we're gonna ask these questions now, but thank you. And I appreciate the call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jon, I appreciate it. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Dorothy Ditalia, I'm 45, Melanowave. I just wanna say, there are people that go down that center, especially downstairs, and that's the only place they have, that they feel they're safe. And as far as our families, they're very upset with this. They're very upset with this because that's the only place we have to go. And especially the people that go down and have breakfast and lunch, and a lot of the people are saying, they're not gonna go, that's all. I just have one more question. Who put in for the grant? Who applied for the grant, the money that you're getting?
We're gonna ask, but I know that, as far as some of this, is that the last question? Is that the last question? I can answer what I know, and then I'm gonna ask Ms. Buck.
That's my last question.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lauren. So this-
I didn't say this one thing. There are going to be carts there, and they are going to be sleeping in our bocce room. There are going to be cots there, and they are going to be sleeping in our bocce room.
All right, we'll answer that.
That's what we were told.
Thank you. We're gonna answer that. We're gonna answer, let, let--
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just to give them a rundown, if, if Ms. Buck or Ms. Hampton wants to come up here, uh, but just a couple of the ones that I know, and, and there was one directed towards the council, would you, would you, would you have your parents there? I mean, I, I, I love the Senior Center. I really do, and I think they do a fantastic job. I, I do trust, I do trust that, that the Senior Center will still continue to be safe. I do agree, though, I do, that, you know, maybe there's a, maybe there's a better alternative for location, but there's a couple of reasons why that I think we're getting an explanation. One of them happens to be the emergency generator that, that's there, and that's, that's the reason it's there, is as an emergency generator, because if there is a power outage, that's what it's there for. But, a, and as far as the grant goes, um-- I, I, I don't, I think that when they mentioned there, there's some funding, there's Opera Funding--
On the, on the grant, I think there's a little bit of miscommunication. The city received state funding, um, I want to say back in 2015, uh, for the emergency generator because, um, that site was designated as the emergency shelter site for the city. There have been other upgrades that have been provided, uh, through state funding, um, around, um, emergency management. So, that, because that location has been, um, designated, it's, it's been, um, we've received grant funding, uh, for it. Uh, the other thing that I'd say is that the, um, the, the, the cost of, of operating this is being, um, you, you, the Opera Funding is being used to, to fund, um, this, um, pilot project. So, uh, again, I, I understand and I hear, and I, I know the Mr. President doesn't want me to turn around and address the, the residents here, but I hear your concerns. I totally understand. We're not here to do any harm to anybody. Ultimately, what we're looking for is to provide a service that we've always provided in that space, um, and to do it professionally, and to do it in a way that, um, that, you know, represents how we, how we operate and what we do. Um, we, we do not want to disturb anybody at the Senior Center. My mom goes to Senior Center, not all that often because she has a hard time getting out, but, um, she's gone there. I would continue to let her go there, um, if she wanted to, if she was able to. So, um, I, I just think it's really important, uh, for us to, to acknowledge that, uh, and I don't know how many people knew that, that center was used as, as the designated shelter space for the city, that it's been, um, that. And I, I definitely hear from the council, the communication, as Lauren kind of laid out, this has been something that's in kind of ongoing and a fluid, uh, a, a fluid situation. Uh, but we're happy to meet with, um, as many folks as possible to make sure that everyone feels comfortable with what we're doing. So--
Thank you. And so just a couple of the questions, Ms. Buck, and I'm just gonna ramble them off here, but, um, one big one, where do they go at 7:00 AM if they, if there's people there? Uh, food, I believe, I was told, no food will be served, no food will be, uh, uh, can be consumed. There will be a small snack bag that's, uh, given to them upon their exit. Um, you know, obviously, we'd like to know, are there alternative locations that could be considered? There's some good points, uh, good ones pointed out tonight. Uh, can you give us some more details on the cleaning, which you kind of already did, but a little bit more? Um, are they gonna be tested? Are they gonna be vaccinated? Are, how are we gonna do that? We talked about the grant. There are not gonna be any cots, there're gonna be chairs, was what I was told, there's gonna be chairs, not cots, and, um, and then, of course, bo-- bocce is not gonna be interrupted, one, I believe, so, this should be true. But also, just to, uh, if you can give us the answers on that, Ms. Buck, that'd be great.
Sure. Just remind me if I don't hit any of them. So, the, there aren't gonna be no cots, there are chairs, um, it's not a shelter, and therefore we don't have, you know, yoga mats or, or beds. There are essentially kind of like beach chairs, um, that Housing Family has provided, again, based on the experience that other cities have had with these operations. Other locations, I mean, we talked about as many locations as we could potentially think of in terms of where to put this, um, and multiple different reasons, but really the main reason is that this, this, the, um, Senior Center is designated as the emergency location for the city. It has a generator, uh, that is able to power the entire building if the power goes out, and, and so this is where we're piloting the program. Can you prompt me some, on some other questions?
Testing and/or vaccination status.
Okay. We have a COVID policy for everyone who enters the building. They'll be screened with questions about symptoms. Um, we have rapid COVID tests available to Housing Family staff who have, um, told us that they are, that they utilize rapid tests in other facilities and are comfortable administering, uh, rapid tests to guests that come in, uh, who they believe need to be tested. We will be asking people to, uh, report symptoms and be excluded from the building if they have had COVID, um, been diagnosed with COVID, um, or have COVID symptoms and, and are tested and, and are positive, and they'll be asked to leave the building. We'll, we'll not have anyone that we know of who has COVID, including the staff of Housing Families, in the building with the same policies that we use for the employees of the City of Revere. Um, we use the CDC protocol where anyone who has COVID needs to be out, be isolating for five days. We use that, that protocol for the, um, for the COVID policy that we implemented here. I would just like to reiterate that most of the, again, most of the data about the risk for COVID is not about touching surfaces that people have used that potentially could have COVID on it. That's not really how you pick up COVID. Is it possible? Everything is possible. But really, the huge risk is that, is, is breathing in air, is, is sleeping next to someone who has COVID, is having a kid who coughs in your face who has COVID. That's where the risk is. It's airborne. It's not about touching surfaces. Of course, there's, you know, virus can last on surfaces. That's why we're using the misters to try to reduce the risk of like a, a kill rate on, on COVID virus, and that's why we're implementing them in the cleaning process.
And then, what happens at 7:00 AM?
I mean, that's a great question, right? So, um, the risk is, uh, that, the risk that we're trying to prevent is exposure deaths overnight from people in extreme temperatures. You know, we are not opening the Senior Center during normal business hours in this capacity because that's not the use of the building, and that's not smart to do. You know, people, we're, we've talked to Housing Families about transportation options to make sure people have a way to get back to potentially where they spend the day. They can always go to public buildings that have, um, heat during the day, but we are not, it's not a, a, a center that's gonna be open during the business hours of the, you know, that the Senior Center is normally open.
Okay. I think that was the last question I had, or we, we had written down. Um, I, I would just ask that, you know, the makers of the motion, I know that the motion was to ask for the details. I think that we got a fair share of details.
Mr. President-- There was, there was one other thing that I just wanted to comment on--
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Because we did hear, I did hear, uh, from one senior who said that, uh, she was told by the Board of Health that she couldn't have, uh, food--
Food, yeah.
Um, and I don't believe that to be the case, but, um, that may have been something that during COVID, but the, recently, because I heard just the other day, they had a pretty big spread of food. So, on, yeah, the second floor. So I, we'll, we'll double check, I, I'll double check, but that was not my understanding. Okay. But like, recently, like, this week, or?
Mr. Mayor.
All right, I, yeah, yeah. No, I just, I wanted to make sure because--
You're making me use this--
I don't want there to be any, I don't want there to be any misinformation about a Board of Health, um, regulation that's not, not in place, where the, we're not restricting people to have food up, uh, in the Senior Center.
Thank you for clarifying that. Counselor Rizzo?
Yeah, Mr. President, um, thank you very much for, uh, you know, for bringing up this motion. Um, you know, again, it was a late motion that was, uh, submitted, and obviously, it was a motion that, um, really impacted, uh, you know, a large portion of our senior population. We're only seeing, uh, probably a microcosm of people who would have liked to come up here tonight. I'm sure there's many more who feel the same way they do that aren't here. And, you know, it, it like really struck me when they talked about, you know, um, it being designated, as if somehow the Senior Center was this historic, uh, landmark or something. I mean, we can make a warming center wherever we want. This is our city. This is the city of Revere. We can put it wherever we want. And, and, you know, if we have to get an emergency generator at another location, we just talked about spending $325 million for kids, can we spend a few dollars on seniors to help keep them, uh, safe? I mean, I just don't understand it, why we're so reluctant to look at an alternative location. Homeless, I, you know, we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay Housing Families, Inc., we're gonna pay them, they're not gonna lose any money. I don't know what the reluctance is, why we can't look at the community center, down at the police station, where they, they, they obviously have an emergency generator, they obviously staff 24/7. I mean, I don't know why we, why are we so reluctant? Why are we digging in on this? Well, I don't want to die on this hill. I, you know, look, as far as I'm concerned, I'll put a substitute motion in that at least they investigate an alternative location to make these people, you know, happy and safe and, and let them go on. You know, Mr. Scatino said, this is one of the few things that a lot of these people look forward to every day, and we have to sit here and subject them to this? I'm not gonna be part of it. I, I think the City Council should make a motion that we look at an alternative location, and I'm offering up that motion. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Counselor Rizzo. Counselor Sorino?
Mr. President, I had, uh, two questions. Did I, did you--
Counselor Sorino.
Thank you. Through you to Ms. Buck, can you just speak to how, um, the population to come in, those fifteen individuals, um, to utilize the warming center would be selected? Because I think, and there is unfortunately stigma about the homeless population of the city, and that is disgusting and disgraceful, but that's not, I'm not talking about that particularly. But, um, this warming center could potentially be used by seniors who, their, their, um, if their electricity were to go out, if their heat were to go out, and can, can you just speak to that? And th, this is not, these, these are not, I don't want to say, you know, people from the street, but these could be our neighbors. These could be our elderly, you know, an elderly person who doesn't have family, or who somebody isn't going to take in for a night, um, just like in Buffalo. So could you explain that, please?
Sure. I mean, that's very true. So, um, it's, this is a warming center for anyone who needs it. And so, you're absolutely right that there's potentially people who are housed, who have a situation where, you know, you can't pay the heat, um, you can't, you know, you can't pay your heater or electricity bill, and who need a warm place to go at night, and those people would be able to, to utilize the center as well. One thing that we didn't talk about is that, um, you know, this is not for families, or, I, this is for people who are over eighteen. So we're not taking on, um, housing families who have kids. There's state services at those, that families have to be referred to, um, you know, that we're not capable, nor should we be housing families overnight, uh, for the winter. But yes, it's, um, this is a place where anyone could, anyone could go who needed to go, uh, during these four months, who doesn't, um, feel safe or warm at night. It's not necessarily just for unsheltered homeless. It's for anyone who could potentially need it.
Thank you. Who are you looking? Counselor Viscotti?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Through you to, um, Ms. Buck, um, I, I know the, obviously, it's been designated as a warming, uh, shelter. The thought process of maybe just entertaining, uh, uh, another spot if, in fact, this doesn't work, okay? Is that something that can be done now? Or, um, if, and, and like Counselor Rizzo said, there's gotta be an abundance of other people that just couldn't make it here tonight, okay, regarding their concerns. Is there, to put those people at ease, is there a, a thought process of, okay, um, maybe, where they're not feeling as comfortable with this, okay, and they're there on a regular basis more than we are? To make them feel comfortable, is there a thought process on, uh, entertaining another location? Is, 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 because that, that ultimately is, uh, a, a concern for them, and that's not gonna go away after this meeting. Um, and if they're not comfortable a week down the line, um, then they're gonna be uncomfortable the entire, um, stay of this. So what's the thought process there? Um, you know, moving them along, I, I, you know, in terms of, uh, seven o'clock, how are they gonna be leaving? Are we driving them? Are they, uh, what's the process gonna happen with that?
Sure. I'll address the, the second question first. Uh, we've thought about how to ensure that, um, people move along and go back to either their encampments or to a public, uh, you know, building after the time is up. So, we are planning on piloting, in the beginning, a, a taxi service, um, to transport people back to, uh, the T-Stop or, you know, the Revere Beach, um, to make sure that there's not people loitering around. Now, does that mean that that's gonna be a hundred percent foolproof? You know, we don't, we don't know. We're trying it out to see how that works. It's a model that didn't, it's, again, we're going back to the Malden model, and it's something that they implemented over the years of learning, um, that helps with resident concerns around the area.
But I believe that Mald, i, is it correct that that Malden model is, that stay, is it, is that in a church?
It is.
Is that, it's at, uh, in the basement of a church?
Yeah.
Not, not a senior center? So, I guess that's what their concerns--
We've done outreach to our faith-based leaders, and we haven't found any, so far, any congregation or organization willing to house this, but we did multiple outreach attempts about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Counselor Rizzo offered a verbal motion to request that there be a, an alternative location investigated. Madam Clerk, would you, uh, call that, uh, verbal motion?
Motion, verbal motion presented by Counselor Rizzo, that the mayor be requested to investigate an alternative location for the warming center.
Yeah, roll call.
Roll call on Counselor--
All in favor, is, all in favor? Sordid. Counselor--
We'll take a roll call.
Roll call's fine.
We'll take a roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call on the verbal motion, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito? Motion by Counselor Rizzo, that the mayor be requested to investigate an alternative location for the warming center.
To re, okay, to, to, to review the feasibility of an alternative location. Counselor Morabito? To review the fee-- to, to re, to review the feasibility of an alternative location. Alternative, look up the definition.
Counselor Morabito voting yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
No.
No, Counselor Silvestri?
Considering they already said that we did this, no.
No, Counselor Viscotti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is that, moving on to the next--
Just the disposition of the late motion, was that being placed on file?
Yeah, placed on file. Please, uh, back to regular business. All in favor?
Count Radio Number Six, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the mayor be requested to establish lines of communication with the City Council regarding motions that have been approved and subsequently signed by the mayor. The City Council is not provided with any updates concerning approved motions and must refile motions at the request of their constituents due to the lack of response from the mayor's office.
Counselor Cogliandro, I believe you wish to withdraw this motion?
No.
Okay.
Can we potentially have a minute to let the chambers clear out before we move on?
Why don't we just take a brief pause for sixty seconds? I just want to thank you. All right. We're back, we're back to, back to order. Madam Clerk?
Do you want to reread the motion, Counselor President?
Please.
Calendar item number six, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the mayor be requested to establish lines of communication with the city council regarding motions that have been approved and subsequently signed by the mayor. The city council is not provided with any updates concerning approved motions and must refile motions at the request of their constituents due to the lack of response from the mayor's office.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Hill today about this issue. I really, I really would like to see a little bit more communication, and I appreciate that we have an open line of communication to you, Gianni, I appreciate that very much. When I came on as a counselor, we were getting emails about updates about the motions we filed, so I just would like to try to continue that, because we are really the link between, you know, the people and city services and the administration. So when we get asked questions, it's nice to have answers, you know? But I guess we can, you know, place it on file, that's fine.
Thank you, Counselor Cogliandro.
No, I'd like to comment on that.
Counselor Rizzo?
I'd like to comment on that, and, you know, I'm sure you guys are doing your work, but I know, you know, from experience, that we would send counselors responses to their question, to, to, you know, to their motions. And, I mean, I don't think that's too much to ask, there's only so many motions every week, at least put it in our, so we used to get, I, we used to put it in the package so counselors would get it as a response to their motion. I mean, I don't see why, why we couldn't, or at least a direct email, you know? I mean, I, I think that would be helpful, instead of it just going off into oblivion, you know, so that we know, okay, this is being acted on. Like, I've got a few motions that I put in, I asked, never, never heard back, have no idea. You know, one involved DOT, I mean, I, it's like you just give up, it's, you know, it, it should not be that way. There should be more communication. So I do agree with that motion, and I would like to see, if it's gonna be placed on file, placed on file, but I hope it's placed on file with an understanding that maybe we will start to get a response, because we're responding, when we put a motion in, generally it's in response to a constituent. And so when you, we're not getting a response back, that's really not responding to the constituent, so, because we need to get back to them. And there's nothing more embarrassing than bumping into that constituent in Market Basket and having them say, "Hey, whatever happened to this?" Or, "Whatever happened to that?" And we don't have an answer. So if we could just get some sort of correspondence back, that would be very helpful to us. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Rizzo. Counselor Serena?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, thank you, Counselor Cogliandro, for filing this motion. Anecdotally, just totally, it just so happened that this motion came up tonight. About a week and a half ago, a friend of mine reached out and said, you know, "The traffic lights at the intersection by Amazon in the old movie theater, they're still, that timer hasn't reset, and we're still waiting in traffic." I asked, I asked through a motion to have the city ask Mastod at least twice to change that. So I gave up, and I said to her, "You know what? You need to call your state rep, because the city's not getting anywhere with Mastod." I went back into the records, and we did, the mayor's office did send a letter to Secretary Teszler, but then I ended up reaching out, and I talked to somebody at the Arlington office in Mastod, and he said, "Oh, you know, that never trickled down to us. You know, if you sent a letter, if they sent a letter to the secretary, it doesn't always trickle down to us." So there was just, there was no follow-up, and there was no follow-up on my part either, and, you know, maybe I should have too, but it would be nice if we, you know, could have some collaboration there with motions like that, and, and in general, you know, the national grid stuff, the, you know, there are a lot of motions that we put in that aren't necessarily followed up unless we, like, remain on it like a hawk. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Serena. Did you, Mr. Mayor, did you wish to?
Just want to say that we're happy to, to collaborate and communicate with anyone. I think we've, you know, had a open-door policy, staff has been more than willing to, to respond, and if there are things that folks, you know, want to know answers to, where, where, you all have my cell phone number, I'm happy to, to pick up the phone. I think I pick up the phone every time everyone calls, so I'm happy to answer any questions. I will say, as we've had staff turnover, it's always helpful to have that reconnection and make sure that we're on the same page. I know some of you are a little bit more frequent visiting the office, and some of you are not, and as somebody who, as a counselor, was not very frequent visitors to the mayor's office, I totally understand, folks are busy, but if we can find a way to make sure that everyone knows that we're following up, because I don't think that anybody could say we're not getting work done in the city. And so that, that work is being, being done every day. We have tremendous staff that's helping to do that work. And the other thing that I'd say is, and I don't know how, how useful it is to maybe have a training session on Minute Track and on the process that, that we undertake as an office when things kind of move along, and maybe there's some, some work that can be done so that folks don't have to be as on top of everything and being a pain in the neck on certain, on certain items, so, but happy to collaborate and, and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. Just, and something Gianni and I had spoken about is when you guys email the, the departments that are required to be reached out to, maybe add the ward counselor or the maker of the motion onto those emails, that way we can kind of be in that chain. I think that would improve communication. That's all we're trying to do. I filed, we talked about it the other day, I filed the, the motion to get the list of the streets that are gonna be done next year. It's just about lessening the amount of communication we have to have, you know, so we can make each other's lives easier, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Hill. Name me the address.
Good evening, everyone. Gianni Hill, aid to the mayor, 281 Broadway, since you're gonna make me, even though you all know me already, it's okay. Counselor Cogliandro, thank you, we had a great conversation on the phone today. I have a great working relationship with many of you. As I said, when I, when I first started in this role back in July, I sent all of you an email with my phone number, with my, my personal cellphone number and my email. Reach out, we have an open-door policy, as the mayor said. Reach out with any questions or concerns. You have Counselor Serena, you've called me a few times checking on an update, I get an answer to you that same day. If you give me a phone call and an email, you will get a response. Counselor Novoselfsky, you come in the office all the time, you need an update, sometimes the response is, "I don't have an answer for you right now, but I'll get you an answer." Right? And I'm working on it, and I'll get you that answer. Counselor Cogliandro, the motion you made back in December about the roads and sidewalks repair list, for example, we had a meeting the day after that to sit down with Donnie, Chief of Infrastructure, sit down with our team and start putting together that list. That list is still not finalized yet, but if we just communicate, I would let you know, "Hey, that list isn't finalized, I'm happy to speak with you, and we do have some more updates for you." So really, it's just about checking in, I'm happy to sit down and brainstorm some better ways that we can keep the communication open between the mayor's office and the council, definitely open to suggestions, but just want to say, you have my number, feel free to pick up the phone and call, happy to get you an update at any time. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Serena? I'm sorry, Counselor Rizzo?
Yeah, Mr. President, just, just like one last thing, like I, so, it's not a matter, I understand you'll answer your phone, and the mayor will answer his phone and all that, this is more, at least the way I understood the motion, that we get something back, basically, like, I think somebody said, I think, you know, I think the counselor just said, "Include us on an email." Like, I'm just gonna give you an example, like, I had submitted a motion when, back when the council was heavily involved with the bio lab regulations, okay? And I, I had spent significant time putting together and doing some research on Board of Health regulations that might help us enforce exit, what was, what's, what's, what's going to be planned there. We haven't heard much about the bio lab lately, but whatever's gonna go there would have given us some teeth, right? I never heard where that, where that went. If anyone was discussing it, if it was received, if it was thrown out, I don't know what happened to it. That's one. I put a motion in years ago about extending the deceleration lane on Squire Road to go into Market Basket. I've, I've tried to get an answer from DOT personally, I can't get one. I've never seen anything on behalf of the city that was sent to me saying, "Look, we're looking to do this with DOT." So just things to help us a little bit, you know, you know, and even if you were to include us on an email, at least we know you're working at it. You can get stuff done out of the mayor's office much better than we can oftentimes as a counselor. So we, that's why we put the motion in, that's why it goes up that chain the way it does. And if we don't hear anything back, I mean, yeah, I suppose we'd have to cut, you know, try to keep track of it, and, but we don't have an administrative staff the way the city has. You, you know, and so just a little more communication without us having to be as proactive, just basically monitoring 11 councils, that's all. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Rizzo. You know, and I, I do agree, this is a great motion, but again, one of the most important pieces that was brought up was Mr. Hill mentioning, you know, and, and the mayor. For a lot, a lot of the things, you know, if we, if we remind or send a message or a text or an email, the, the response time is very, very good. But we also have to do our part to make sure that there's substantial, there's substantive motions, and they, they're not just gluttoning up the process, because sometimes that can happen. And I fault no one for responses from the DOT, no offense, counselor down there, but the response from a lot of those major organizations is very lackluster, so.
Mr. President, just one last thing.
It's a collaborative work. Mr. Hill?
Thank you. Through you to the council. Just one last thing, too. For example, when I sent that email out in August, I asked all of you if you had any outstanding motions or anything, please let me know. Counselor Novoselfsky, not to put you on the spot again, but you've been great. He reaches out, he says, "Hey, I have all these outstanding motions. I've only been in, in this position since July, so there probably are motions that have slipped through the cracks. And if that is the case, please just send a reminder, I'm happy to follow up on it. Just let me know, okay?" So sometimes it's a matter of just sending an email and a follow-up, and, you know, we'll get to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I'm gonna also set my calendar for a quarterly reminder to send you an email on behalf of the entire council for any follow-up motions. And just, you're living proof, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Counselor Novoselfsky. Motion, all in favor of the motion? Place it on file.
Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counselor Serena, that the mayor instruct the city solicitor to draft an ordinance within the city's purview and jurisdiction to regulate the use of drones in the city of Riviere to the best of the city's legal ability. The rationale behind drafting such an ordinance would be to ensure public safety, given that Amazon has begun deliveries via drones in two cities in California and Texas over the holidays, with plans to expand use of drone delivery throughout the country in due time.
Counselor Serena?
Thank you, Mr. President. I filed this because a, a resident actually reached out to me. He had sent me a news article about Amazon in Texas and California starting a pilot program with delivering via drones, and where we will have a, an Amazon warehouse coming online in Ward 6 and the one on American Legion Highway. I just want to try to get ahead of this. I know that a lot of this, I started doing some homework, and a lot of it because airspace is the FAA, it's controlled by federal regulations as well as state regulations. So I've been in touch with Rep. Janino as well, and just kind of alerted her to keep an eye out for any legislation at the state level regarding drones, not even so much drones as they pertain to recreational use, but drones being used to deliver goods throughout the community. So if we could have the city solicitor just look into seeing what we can and cannot do to try to get ahead of this, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Rizzo?
Yeah, I, you know, this is a good motion that we should be looking into. We've got two enormous Amazon distribution facilities, I mean, with all these drones, you, you know how many packages are delivered in Riviere? We're gonna, we're gonna look like Ukraine when these planes start, when these drones start flying around. I mean, this is gonna be incredible with these packages all flying through the, I don't know how an urban city like Riviere is actually gonna get this accomplished, but, you know, I think we need to be on top of it, instead of being reactive, if we can be proactive, I think we should be. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, if I might have a leeway.
Counselor Serena?
I'm sorry, and this is not to say that I am pro drone delivery or advocating that they deliver by drones, it's just that, from what I was reading, because of federal regulation, it might not be something at the municipal level that you can outright ban, but we can through zoning ordinances, through whatnot, we can control where things are delivered, where they land, and stuff like that. So it would be a way to, to kind of get ahead of the problem and, you know, not, I'm, like, I just don't want it to be, you know, that Counselor Serena was for drone delivery, because I'm not. I just want to kind of get ahead of a problem that I foresee.
Counselor Serena? I, I, I think that's a good point, to get ahead of it, especially considering the proximity to the Amazon. Just so you do know, and I think you mentioned it with the FAA, so Riviere has very strict, because we're on the flight path, very strict zone regulations from, from them, so there's no interference with the flight paths. I know that for some people that doing photography, they can't fly drones in many, many areas of Riviere with, there's a certain height that they can hit. Although, I will say, from, from clogging up the roads, I'd love to see some form of drone usage at some point, whether it's Riviere or anywhere else, just to take more of those vehicles off the road. All in favor of the motion?
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor be requested to direct the city solicitor outside legal counsel to address the city council relative to the property status of 585 North Shore Road. The same motion was submitted on August 22nd and approved by the mayor on September 7th. To date, the city council has not received any response regarding this matter.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Subsequent to that motion, I had a meeting in Attorney Di Ambrosio's office with Peter Brown, his colleague, and we had the people in there that owned the building, and while they were somewhat reluctant to do anything, they were later forced by the Board of Health to go in there and clean the area up. And that particular time, we also had an oil spill down there. I went down to check with that, the fire department was down there, the DP, DEP, and et cetera, and there were holes in the floor, I almost fell through a hole myself, okay? Nothing happened. I put a motion in, nothing happened. Then I put a subsequent motion in this past spring, and it passed the city council, and to Mayor, the mayor's credit, he signed the motion August 22nd or August 23rd, and nothing since then. We haven't heard one word since then. People ask me every day, "What's going on with that building?" It's deplorable looking, it should have been torn down a long time ago, it's a dangerous building. I asked, on the origin, on the second motion I put in, I asked for the city solicitor and/or the outside legal counsel to come up and explain, number one, whether any, do we own the building? That's what I was told one time, "We own the building." And then they filed bankruptcy, and there was nothing they could do, the city could do. Now we don't own the building? What is, what is the tax arrears on that, if any? What are the fines and arrears on that? These are questions I'd like to know, and I'd like to know, basically, what our position is with regard to that property. Do we own it, or don't we own it? And if we own it, let's get the damn thing torn down and give the people down on Riverside and the Point of Pines some relief, so they don't have to stare at that building every day. And also, no kids go in there and get hurt, or no even adults go in there and get hurt. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Any other counselors? All in favor of the motion? Sordid.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor request the DPW to repair several sections of fencing that have been damaged or removed at the following locations on Mills Avenue, at River Ave, at Frank Ave, and number 31 Mills Ave. This motion is filed in accordance with Rule 37. Residents filed 311 request for this work early, early in the summer.
Counselor Powers?
Yeah, early this summer, the residents down there requested through 311 that these repairs be done. They haven't been done yet, and I think this particular motion right now speaks for itself. Thank you.
Certainly does. Counselor Powers, any other, any other counselors? All in favor? With that, we, we conclude our business for this evening. The next regular, regular... The next regular scheduled council meeting will be on January 23rd. Have a great night. Thank you.